All right, we call the October thirteenth, twenty twenty five meeting to order. If we could do the invocation, Mr. Pili, do you mind doing that invocation for us?
Oh, thank you. That we serve under you. Ask you to guide us this evening, help us to have clarity of thought and mind. Direct us please with your spirit through what we do would bring honor to you, but be good for the citizens of Dalton Township as well for asking in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
The next slide. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Amy, you can roll call please.
Michael?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Christie?
Here.
Eugene?
Yes.
Nola, president. Heather?
Here.
Amy, here.
Thanks. And then next we have the approval of the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda. All right, motion by Nola, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Lee. And then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right. We're done, we have the approval of past meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion, approve last meeting's pass.
All right, motion by Michael, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Nola. And then any discussion from the board on that one? No, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, opposed, passed, we'll put that on file. And then we have the treasurer's report, Christie.
Interest going down, but staying the same at around four point one. Everything's good.
Okay. And then we put that on file. And then next is pay the bills. Washington pay the bills, perfect, motion for Nola to pay the bills, do we have a support? Give you guys a second to look it over. Support by Christie. Any discussion from the board? All right, hearing none, we will roll call vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Amy, yes.
All right, motion passes. Next we have a series of our reports, so we have the fire department. Fire department report, I know Chief, you did want to add about the fire prevention.
Yes, we had about four hundred, which is down, but everybody's been down to share. It was a great night and both of them did make it, we appreciate your support.
Well, this is it.
That's all I have for now, there's some other things coming next month.
Next one goes out first.
Yeah, okay, maybe it's you.
Yes. All right, and then we put that report on file. And then we have the planning commission report, second to do that. Did you have anything that you wanted to add? If not, if you put that.
No, I actually have to add to that, that being.
Okay. So we probably should not try to do that. All right, we'll put that report on file. And then the next is planning and zoning report. Anything that we need to add to that? All right, we'll put that report on file as well. Next is parks and recreation report.
Nothing good, eh?
Perfect. Put that report on file. And then next is maintenance and grounds report, Justin, did you have anything you needed to add?
No.
You guys a second to view. All right, we can put that one on file as well. And then next to not delay, Eric, we have the audit presentation.
That was fast, you guys had very efficient. Okay, I will squeeze over here, hopefully most of you can see this screen without me standing in the way, but I'm Eric Bandoff. For clearly long, we've completed your audit for the year ended March thirty first, two thousand twenty five. I'm here to present a brief overview, but I'm really here for your benefit, so if you guys have any questions or comments, even if it's just something that's hard to spur that you talk about amongst each other, that's fine, I'm here for your benefit, so. I will jump into things, I think you guys should have copies that we sent in the mail, so most of what I talked about, I'll put up on the screen. The first thing in the audit report, as always, is the independent auditor's opinion, which appears on page one and two. And basically the top page, one of the important stuff was first couple paragraphs and the opinions there. That second paragraph says, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present really in all material respects, the various financial statements for the year that ended in accordance with accounting principles. They're only accepted in the United States of America, that's a really long sentence, but it means what it says, it's what we call an unmodified opinion, sometimes called a clean opinion. It's the highest opinion that we can give, and it's what you guys have usually received, so. Good job there. Following that is the management discussion and analysis, I'm not going to go through that, but that's a nice little summary page overview of the financial statements from the township's perspective, so. It's kind of the quick notes version, I would certainly encourage you to look at the entire thing, but at a minimum, it's kind of a good place to go to get an executive overview. All right, that's all the boring stuff, I know numbers are much more exciting. So we'll look at the general fund, which should be in your book on page thirty nine, if you want to look there, I have a somewhat summarized version up on the screen and prior year information next to it. So we'll just talk about how things went with the general fund. Total revenues for the year, again, grand thirty nine, it'd be a third column, otherwise we're up here on the screen. Total revenues of two million, one hundred and sixty nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty eight dollars, an increase of about three hundred and ninety five thousand dollars this year. A few things to note, property taxes are up about twenty eight thousand, but it continues to grow up, that's as expected. Most of the increase is on the federal line, and that is the ARPA money getting spent this year, about three hundred and sixty three thousand dollars, so that's most of the increase. Investment earnings are up about fifty six thousand dollars, both due to higher interest rates and higher cash balances, although as Christie just noted, they're starting to come down a little bit now, so we'll see how this fiscal year ends up, but nonetheless, the last couple of years have been greatly improved where things were when interest rates are really low, so. Kind of a double edged sword there, you want low rates for low mortgages, but you want high rates for your own savings, and you can't have both at the same time, so I guess you got to enjoy which one of the two you get. Other revenue categories are pretty similar to last year, on the expenditure side, I've got these grouped up a little bit more, they are broken up by department on page thirty nine, but overall expenditures of one million, seven hundred and ninety three thousand, nine hundred and eighty six dollars, an increase of about three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Similar to the increase in revenues, as you've spent your ARPA money this year. A few things to note. Let's see, what are we going to talk about here, the road range, range expenditures are, which are basically public works, there you can see public works is up a chunk there, and that's again due to the ARPA funded chip, see a chip and fog ceiling. Capital outlay at the bottom of eighty eight thousand, it is comprised of a couple generators for this building, the fire department, play, car plate structure, and the shed for the transfer station. That leaves you with an excess of revenues over expenditures of three hundred and seventy five thousand, nine hundred and seventy two dollars. There was some one time sale of capital assets and a small transfer out to the re-eradication funds. Leaves you with a net change in fund balance of six hundred and twenty two thousand, seven hundred and seventy six dollars, and ending fund balance of three million, three hundred and eighty seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty three dollars. So good year, you will put some money aside, I know you guys have more big projects coming up the road, the short projects and all that, so you've got money to be able to do some of those things, any questions on the general fund? Okay. That's good news, everybody's happy. Okay, fire fund, which would appear on the next page, page forty, total revenues of nine hundred and seventy one thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars, up to fifty three thousand, again, just like the general fund rising taxable value. Total expenditures of five hundred thousand, eight hundred and ninety four dollars, an increase of about seventy five thousand dollars. Although, there's a lot of things changing in there. It's got it shown here on two lines, public safety, which is your operations and capital outlay. Now, operations actually went up a tick with that new millage that took effect in the prior year, now has been used to hire full time firefighters, so you see that public safety in total was from one hundred and ninety seven thousand to four hundred and eighteen thousand of those new firefighters, but that was offset by a decrease in capital outlay, which went from two hundred and twenty seven thousand to eighty one thousand. As there, that was just some of those minor ramp up improvements over at the fighter station. So theoretically down the road, when you guys have to make another large capital purchase, because I know those happen every few years, you'll see a bigger bump up in capital outlay expenditures, but again, those increases in operations were funded with the millage, it just took effect in the prior year, so we don't see as big an increase in this year. That leaves you with excess of revenues over expenditures of four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Sale of one old fire truck for thirty one thousand, five hundred, leaves you with an increase of five hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and twenty one dollars. Ending fund balance of one million, eight hundred and eighty six thousand, four hundred and forty six dollars, so the fire fund is in good shape as well, and I know a lot of those fire trucks can cost a lot, high six figures, sometimes even seven figures, so. It's nice that you guys have the money set aside to be able to make those future capital improvements when they come up down the road the next few years. Any questions on the fire fund? Okay, we'll talk the super fund, that's your other big fund, that actually is up on the front, page nineteen, but again, I got it up on the spring, a few comparative years. Total operating revenues at the top there of a hundred and sixty three thousand, six hundred and three dollars, up about two thousand dollars, really, really pretty similar to last year. Same thing with operating expenses, a hundred and sixty one thousand, up about three thousand, so revenues and expenses are pretty close to last year. Leaves you with an operating loss of eight hundred and twenty three dollars, so again, just like last year, pretty much pretty close to break even. Non operating activity, which is where investment earnings, connection fees, interest expense, sale of fixed assets, unusual things that aren't directly related to providing service go. That was an interest expense exceeded interest revenues by about sixteen thousand dollars, so overall your net position went down seventeen thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. With an ending net position of one million, three hundred and thirty six thousand, three hundred and thirty six dollars. I always have to remind you, the super fund follows a different sort of accounting than your other funds, your other funds are what we call modified accrual basis, which focus on current resources. Things that are either cash now or will be in the near future, like in the coming year. The super fund operates more like a private sector accounting, which includes everything, not just the current stuff, so you have all your fixed assets, infrastructure, pipe and the ground related debt. Which is why we use the term net position instead of fund balance, because it means something different, and I always say that because you see those net position numbers don't necessarily equal the amount of resource available, because some of it's already been spent in the ground. So that one, of that one million, three hundred and thirty six thousand, unrestricted fortune, that's a little over a million dollars. I would note that that you have done a pretty good job the last few years, you can see you got that pumped up over a million dollars back in two thousand twenty three, and been able to keep it up there. You do have some significant debt coming through, there's those county bonds, but at the same time, you're getting closer and closer to the end of those, I know that's been a concern for quite a few years here, that the super fund was generating enough money to be able to pay those. And you have been able to keep up with those the last couple of years, and it looks like you're good for at least the next few years, and again, every year you pay them down, one less year to pay, so. Keep an eye on the sewer fund, but things are looking much better here with additional flow and some lookups from a few years ago than they did, say, five or ten years ago, and they didn't look so good, so. Any questions on sewer fund? Okay, I think that's it for my presentation on the statements themselves, but any questions on any other thing else in the book or any of the other numbers? Funds, otherwise, I do have a couple letters that I will bring up here. You. Okay, you guys have two letters as well. The one letter is what we call the auditor's letter to those charged in governance, and that's the, we start off with, we have audited the financial statements, et cetera, et cetera, of Dalton Township. I talk about this letter every year, I talk about this letter everywhere I go, professional standards require us to put certain things in writing in the form of a letter to governance, which is you, very specific things go in this letter. Having said that, what's in this letter, key vanilla or generics, there's not a lot of unusual stuff in here. It just talks about any significant new accounting policies this year, and there weren't any significant estimates, like, say, for instance, depreciation, the fact that we looked at them, looked at reasonable. Any difficulties encountered, and there were nothing, nothing to note there. Some information on audit entries that we recommended, which are attachments. Any disagreements with management on accounting or auditing principles, there weren't any, assign representation letter that was provided by management at the end of the audit. And a few other things behind there, including the adjustments that we provided, but for the most part, other than maybe the audit adjustments, it's very generic, just wanted to let you know what it was and why you had it. And the other letter we've got is a recommendation letter, and that's the one in planning and performing our audit letter. And I would note, as I always do, we are not auditing your internal controls or expressing an opinion on them, we are auditing your financial statements, however, in the course of planning and performing an audit, if items come to our attention, we bring them to your attention in the form of a recommendation letter. And that's what you have here, however, I would certainly note, these are just things we came across, there could very well be other weaknesses or areas of improvement that we did not know, because we weren't looking for them, and it's important that the township board and government, management has good policies, procedures, and controls in place, so. Having said that, I think we just have a couple this year, and they're really not that unusual. The first one's just working on improving closing procedures to reduce the amount of audit entries. The important thing there is, the fewer audit entries we have to make, the more accurate your records are before we do the audit, and this is not really unexpected with the turnover, you guys have had a lot of changes since last year, new people are in new jobs. So, good job there, but just work for improvement, and the second one is a very common one as well, and this is the recommendation on the financial statements themselves. I explain this one all the time, but we draft your financial statements as part of the audit. However, they're still your financial statements, your numbers, footnotes, disclosures, et cetera, the only thing in here that's really ours is that opinion letter. Therefore, you should have controls surrounding the preparation of the financial statements. However, most small entities don't have somebody familiar with drafting statements, like a CPA, finance director type person. So we have to give this recommendation that you should look at, at those controls. And I will admit, as I do all the time, that this whole comment is silly, but we just have to put it in there. I suggest this, you guys nod your head and go, yeah, we understand and agree with you, however, we choose not to spend the money, and I nod and go, I understand as well, I wouldn't expect you to either, so. We play this whole song and dance every year, don't worry about that money, certainly won't, besides, you know, we spent some time with the full time elected officials going through things in detail, answering questions, and obviously presenting to the board, continue doing what you're doing, work to improve, and you guys are doing fine. Stay prepared, I'll insert that second comment, either they are tired of talking about it as well, as they did it all the time, so. I definitely want to end this by kind of overview, I know last year was a pretty rough year with things kind of falling apart, and the audit didn't get done till, I think, the end of December, I think I was out here presenting January. The audit was done on time this year, it was filed on time. Obviously, there were some hiccups with all the turnover and some new elected officials and all that for management, but everybody kind of tightened up their belts and did what they could, and we got through it, and anyway, big improvement over last year, so thank you very much. Okay, final chance for questions. Okay, well, I certainly want to thank Christie, Heather, and Amy, maybe to grab you guys nuts along with other staff here for a few days, and you guys survived, and you're still alive, and you have some smiles on your faces. You earned those smiles, thank you very much, we look forward to seeing you guys next year.
Awesome, thank you, Eric. All right, the next thing is our first public comment, does anybody have a public comment? All right. No take, so we'll move on. The next thing that we have in the packet is the senior village money for snowplowing, which we've done in the past. Usually we do senior village money for snowplowing, Living Word Church does that, and then we have the remainder that goes to state seniors, yep. So this is just the, the letter that was provided from Living Word and their estimate as well, so. Yep. And Chris is here as well, so offensive part of the question, so. We got pretty familiar, I think, at looking at this in the last few years, so.
Governor Jeff, I make a motion to approve the payment of senior village funding to Living Word for snowplowing for just for year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Motion by Nola, we have support by Lee. Any discussion from the board? Hearing that, we'll do a roll call vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Amy, yes.
All right, motion passes. Next thing that we have is a resolution that we need to pass for MDOT, it is for Justin or whoever else to do the like. And we need to get like a super clear answer from them, so we need this first, so. We have to pass that. And when we do get the motion, just know that I mistyped, it is supposed to be twenty twenty five dash twenty nine. We made that many resolutions in a year?
Oh, I make a, a motion to approve the adoption of resolution twenty twenty five, twenty nine.
Right, motion by Nola, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Amy, any discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll do the roll call vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Amy, yes. Eugene?
Oh.
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Right, motion passes. Next we have the PLN contract for Twin Lake, they're on rotation, the lakes are, so this is the contract that would go from twenty twenty six through twenty thirty, so four years. The cost is on there for their breakdown over those years. I know there's been discussion about it in the past. I did ask about doing a single year, because I know we had, Jeff had gone and gotten different estimates and quotes, and we ended up sticking with PLN at that time, too. The, we could do a single year, but then we're not locked in at that rate, so if next year the, the the algae and stuff is different, and the treatment that they need to do is more expensive, we're not locked in at the the price that is presented. And so we'd have to pay whatever, whatever the cost is.
We paid this other event assessment, which we got last year.
Yep, correct.
Make a motion to approve the contract of PLN, which relates for the multi-year, multi-year treatment program.
All right, motion by Nola, do we have a support?
Of course.
Support by Eugene. Any discussion from the board?
Only thing, not on this, but this is supposed to be up here.
Yeah, why did I do that? Just bouncing around.
It's no big deal, it's for a.
I, I did, it's, it's lower on the agenda, I don't know why it ended up there, but.
Yeah. If we go, if we go with a multi-year, it's set at the same price for the next five years, five years.
Twenty thirty.
Exactly. Yep, yep, yep. Yep. That's why I love. Starting next summer, so it's twenty twenty six through twenty thirty, so it's four years, yep. Yeah, and it's not on the agenda, for some reason I bumped it up higher on the agenda, so your agenda's not right. And that word, so I apologize. Is it right on yours?
No.
Oh, that's cool.
No, and I'm not.
All right, so we had a motion, motion by Nola, support by Eugene, and then any discussion regarding that from the board? We'll do a roll call vote.
Okay. Noah?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Amy, yes.
All right, motion passes. Next we have the zoning board of appeals appointment, so I did get in touch with Nick, his, Nick Cudden. His term ends next month, so this is just preemptive to, he does want to continue to serve on that board. And I think that that's perfect, so if we can get a motion to approve the appointment of Nick Cudden for zoning board.
Yes, I make a motion to approve Nick Cudden to the zoning board, please.
All right, motion by Lee, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Nola. And then any discussion from the board? Amy will do what I say, roll call vote.
Yeah. Yep.
Lee?
Yes.
Nola? Eugene?
Yep.
Heather?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Amy, yes.
All right, motion passes. And then the next thing to discuss is finance coordinator job. This is something that was talked, Christie, myself, and Amy all discussed this. Kind of went over some numbers in the budget and then looked at issues that we've been facing and having, Amy is here almost every single night until seven PM. And she has too many responsibilities that can't necessarily be taken on by another elected official. The idea of hiring someone would be for part time bookkeeping. It would be super beneficial if they had an accounting degree or some history with municipality accounting systems. That would be somebody who could do bank reconciliations, prepare general ledger. I guess edits, like fix journal entries, keep an eye, keep an eye on the accounts, make sure everything looks healthy and like it should. Which will make our audits go significantly smoother. Also, somebody who can help with finance preparation for projects, so say we want to do the channel, and you know, what does that look like over a five year period, somebody who can get a get a financial analysis together for us, and also, every four years, there's a possibility that we can change out, which then means that new people have the ability to have key parts in finances that maybe don't have that knowledge and understanding. And this would be a person who is a hired person, who would be able to make sure that that internal control stays, so. The approval for this is just so that we can, when we get to this next portion, which will be quarterly budget adjustments, we'll prove that adjustment in there, but this is just for us to start looking at putting that out and what it will look like for the township.
I like it. This would replace.
Yes, so we have Tina, who we had, the board had brought on for, that's good that you mentioned that, is that? For Bank Rex, and she comes in, she was, she was coming in once a week to get us caught up, we had discussed with her, she was still helping us. But she was supposed to be temporary, just to get us caught up for an audit. And we realized very quickly that we need somebody to do that plus a little bit more. Because she's still been helping with Bank Rex, and Amy's still here till seven PM, and, you know, trying to get caught up on, on things in her position, so.
Is this a position that she might be interested in?
Potentially, and it would definitely be wise, I think, to, you know, get whatever the layout, we had a sample in there. Whatever that would look like, and I, I did think that it needed, after talking with other municipalities, it should be between twenty and twenty nine dollars an hour, not twenty two. And there was another edit we made, that policies and procedures should go through the department head, not the supervisor. So this was a sample that we took and edited to fit us. But if she felt like that was a good fit, I think it would be great to, to let her know that it's there and available, if that's something she wants to do, but if not, then we would need to, to advertise for it. But if not, then we would need to advertise for it. It would be changing her current position or having it placed out there for somebody else to, to take. She, and we talked with her about that as well.
I'll make a motion to approve hiring a financial coordinator for Dalton Township.
Right, we have a motion. Support, support by Nola. Any discussion from the board?
It's all good having the audit done on time.
It did, it did. And we all worked very hard to get it there, so. All right, we will do a roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Amy? Yes.
Right, motion passes. All right, moving on to the next thing, second quarter budget adjustments. We have an error in our estimated revenues when it got entered. There was a hero missed, so that did help make more room in the budget. It was supposed to be $87,000 and not $8,700, so that's why that one's highlighted. So, we missed a decent chunk there. And then, for appropriations, the increase for property tax chargeback, that was the money that was used to purchase the land from the county when that was up. And then, also, we put the money for the equestrian trails property in that GL as well. So, we just have to increase. The next one is wages for the finance person, which is, we just explained in the last. So, adding money to that GL to pay, pay that person. The next one, insurance liability and bonding went up, just because the cost of insurance and liability have gone up. And then, reimbursement for unemployment, that, I don't, that wasn't, that was something that was getting missed and struggled with. So, we've been, this isn't catch-up, this is what it really should be when we pay the unemployment. And so, that just needs to increase. The next one should be membership fees and dues legislated. And that went up with the, with the cost of everything else, so. And then, lake weed spraying. For some reason, was that 2,000? It's supposed to be 2,500. Yep, we, out of the general fund, there's a contribution for the lakes, and then there's a contribution for the village as well. So, that's where that goes. The next one is going to be in fire expenditures, professional services. I've spent a little bit more in that with testing. He has a year that's a little bit heavier on, on the side with the F and H equipment adjusted. And so, that was this year, and that's why that needs to be increased. Again, liability, insurance, and bonding, that's just increasing. Cemetery utilities needed to be increased. I added probably more in there than needed to be added, but I didn't want to under, under-add to it. But we are getting into the season where there's going to be less, like, the water is going to be turned off, so there's not going to be constant pumping and, but it was in the red, so we needed to add to it. You're better safe than sorry to add extra, so. Miscellaneous and education for cemetery. This, this particular one was because we had the girls starting to do cemetery training as well. And this will be the only year that we have that increase. The girls will go, Justin will go, but it was my last year going, so. I would just have, I think it's maybe second step. And then, the next one is going to be in, the GL number is 845. On page 18. That is weed spraying. That is for North Lake. We actually, I talked about this previously. North Lake had requested a treatment, and it went over budget. And talking to PLN, they had, they had been told that our yearly budget to spend was higher than it actually was. So, that was a miscommunication as well. So, now I know at the beginning of every year, I need to say, hey, this is how much we have in this GL to spend. Don't do more than that without asking. So, because of that request, more was spent than what we actually had to make, so. There still is money in there, like, total cash account for, to accommodate that. So, it's not going to deplete the account. And that's it? So, I make a motion to approve the second quarter budget adjustments. Right, we have a motion by Nola. Do we have support? Support by Christie. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Nola?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Amy? Yes.
All right, motion passes. And then, for discussion items, I don't know if you have anything? So, you guys don't have anything? I think we're good.
Wow.
I guess I should add, we do have, I'll send out an email, but joint session. I heard back that a lot of the board thinks that. So, that day, I think it was 17?
Yes.
But you'll get an email for that, and there'll be a notice out that we're having joint session. All right, second public comment. If the comment, if the public would like to comment. Ms. Fowler?
When you say the, the financial coordinator job, does Amy not have an assistant? Does she not have a, a deputy clerk standing?
I will answer, technically not public comment. We don't normally go back and forth. But I will say, she does have a deputy clerk. The deputy clerk does do FOIA requests. The deputy clerk does, helps with inputting bills, and it helps a lot with elections. Next year is going to be a huge election year. It's going to be another major election season, so they're going to be very busy. She also does help with building department and cemetery. So, her plate is pretty, she, she has been taking on some of those extra tasks. However, trying to do multiple tasks where you're inputting things and you feel rushed can lead people to, to make mistakes.
In other words, you don't have, she doesn't do finance?
She does not do finance.
Okay.
Other than inputting bills.
Okay, that's, that's my question. She does not do finance.
And I did not when I was the deputy clerk. But that was for other, a little bit of other stuff was going on behind those, so.
My other, my other thing is, the museum will close on October 25th as being open on Saturdays. It's been open between 10:00 and 2:00. So, that will be closing, but you are still welcome to come to the museum by appointment through the Dalton Township Library. All you have to do is call the library. They will call one of us to meet you there or give, give us your phone number. And we welcome members. We meet on the third Wednesday of every month at the library. We welcome, we welcome people to come. But we're not getting very good response at the museum. So, I think we're going to go to, next year, we will be going to all by appointment. Because I sit there, I work while I'm there, because I catalog books. But I don't get, I haven't had any customers the last three, three Saturdays, so. You know, and people ask me, when is the live, when is the museum open? Well, I tell them, but they don't come.
Yeah, I think maybe, too, you'll get more in the summer. Like, the summertime, I think, would be a good one for having.
We had such a wonderful open house.
Yeah.
You know, we had, we had 60 people.
Yeah.
Anyway, so anybody that asks you about the museum, call the library. I mean, we're always welcome to show people.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Fowler.
Yeah.
All right, any other public comment? If you want, you can, the thing is turned, but you can get up or.
Am I allowed to present anything to the board, or does it have to pretend to be intended?
So, you can talk about it, but we can't make any decision on it. And we technically aren't supposed to, like, back and forth. So, you can do what you got to do, and, and then we have.
Cool, yeah. Nice to meet you everybody. My name is Noah. I've got several generations of my family across the Skigun. And we just found out about these meetings today. So, it's our first time here, maybe not, maybe not at last. But the reason I found out about these meetings was because we're trying to get power ran to our house. We're doing a new-built house at the end of Church Street, just up the road here. We've been trying to get power since April. It's been a lot of back and forth with consumers on how to get that done. Power is just about 2,000 feet away from our, our house site, but it's been taking us a while. I tried really hard last week to get the paperwork I needed for you guys to discuss it at the board meetings here today, but I just got it today at 4:00 PM. And the way I understand it is that you guys need to vote on it, like a four out of seven vote, to get the easement to signed. It's an easement that goes through property all owned by Dalton Township. Your next board meeting is November 10th. I just got the paperwork today. We're trying not to wait till November 10th to vote on it. That would really, really help our build process. We're super close to the finish line on that. So, I just wanted to introduce ourselves and say hi and just kind of plead our case to try to get these easements looked at and signed before the next board meeting. I'm not sure if that's possible. But if it's okay with you guys, I have printed copies of the easement for you guys to take a look at.
So, we can take, the reason why is that we need to look at it. We also should, I, I did talk to consumers, so they will have a thing out to consumers. But we also did just get the rest of this today.
Yes, yes.
So, I can make one comment.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? All right. Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Nola. We have support by Michael. And then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any votes? Okay, meeting is adjourned at 6:45.